Couple of weeks, our school is getting its its peak after the school year and into sports. Lots of our sports are having their regular practices every day. Um, maybe there are two games that people can attend now, which is really great because last year we couldn't at all. And so I know that many of my friends and many of the seniors are now going to the volleyball varsity games. They're making their own student section and we're very excited about them. Everybody is like, you should come, you should be there. And so a lot of morale being there and everything. And then we're having our first family party on this Friday at the home football game. And people are very excited for that because even prior to COVID, that's not something you have handled before. So this is a big step forward for us. You know, it was kind of an event for our school and hopefully goes continuing. And then continue on the topic of schools good. I would just like to give a small shout out to our new principal, Ms. Mosley, for being the guy that has the most excitement and energy in the building. It's fantastic. Um, because last week we had our SGA elections for the entire school and they looked great, but elections are so boring. And I say that as a person who has to watch them and I say that as a person who has been in them, even speaking, I am bored. But this election was very, very different compared to that. We walked in, we all went into the gym. Everyone was there. It was kind of like, oh, this is gonna be forty five minutes of us sitting here and maybe listening to these people, possibly. But Ms. Mosley came in, he was very energetic and he had a big group of the senior boys through the rock and handic song, which was very entertaining. Then another senior come up and play a sound assist, which was also very entertaining. So he was really getting everybody's attention and getting us excited and I think that helps us keep our attention on the speakers. And then I can't give all the credit to him for the excellent election that we had because Ms. Liberty, who is a college student, gave a very, very good rap session for her speech. It was very epic and she did a mind drop as well. So that was lovely. And I think with that kind of, she's the SGA president now, so I think the kind of spirit and effort that the principal and the SGA and the more student involvement that we're getting in these kind of activities, we're also trying to have several of our students participate in SGA as well as representatives. So we're getting a lot more student involvement in these kind of activities and planning these kinds of activities. So um, I see that as a big step for us this year and I think it's gonna help bring us back to a better form of those kind of things. Um, and then, um, yeah, and then we have a big hope. I know seniors have lots of plans and I think the other classes do. But for all the different events, like all the senior activities we're gonna do, it's not what we can. But there's lots of pep rallies and sports activities and spirit that's being planned on the horizon. So we're very excited about those. Um, and then switching topics real quick, uh, to something of same importance, but still we're on the health side of everything. Uh, I just want to bring attention to mask breaks for our students. Um, so for some of our students, their mask breaks are limited to almost nonexistent. I asked, um, I've asked multiple students around the school, kind of just in different grades randomly picked out. And some of them are like, I've only had two in the past however long we've been in school. And others are like, I have one and I have some in the block. I'm just getting a pass break. Um, and some are like, I have a guaranteed one in this class and sometimes we go on to other classes. And the point here is just like, it's inconsistent. Um, which hurts for the students who don't have the teachers who are constantly giving them that side. And so I would just say that the mask breaks are crucial to the students for their learning and for their focus because lots of people get headaches over them. Kind of thing. Um, and then they just don't pay attention to class. And then for their health in general is a big concern. Um, but then I also understand that teachers have their own issues with the mask breaks and their own reasons for not doing them or for doing them. That someone's hesitant to do it with weather, their personal reasons, they're afraid that they won't have enough time to teach the lesson because to do the mask breaks, you have to go from here in the building, all the way outside and on the track a few times and then come in. So it is time consuming. Uh, or the genuine assumption that they think that these children have all been taken out in the lot beforehand, so they don't need to do it. So that happens. So with that said, I just want to stress the need for some kind of organized or scheduled mask breaks during the day. Um, students do have lunch, that kind of middle of the day, so maybe if there's a scheduled mask break in the morning and a scheduled mask break in the afternoon, that would be enough to kind of do that. Um, and then some kind of backup plan for the winter. Because nobody's gonna go outside when it's like twenty degrees. So um, that is a concern because I know during the winter, even last year, there was, there is definitely a place to go to. To have their mask breaks on the way. So that was a concern too. It's something that we're known to do and I don't need the teachers to know what to do either. So that was a concern. But I've been in that. I think we're off to a really good start and people are, there's a lot of, there's a lot of good spirit happening and we're very excited for what this year can be. I just wanted to say that. Thank you.
One more second. Any more questions? I think you can ask the students if they have any good ideas about what to do in the winter for mask break.
Mask break, yeah.
Just try to get those ideas back.
Of course.
See, because I like the schedule idea, it's a good idea. Let's see if we can put these ideas together. See how we can implement things consistently. So I appreciate, I appreciate you speaking.
There are lots of schools, preschools, that kids just have jackets and mittens and they go outside and they take it all the way. And that's, that's a really healthy thing to do and I think that's a great thing to structure and we're entirely ready to begin. We can make that structure. We can, we can, this is the right place to take that idea. I appreciate your
Anything that will help us have some kind of degree, a little bit of that.
But you can also tell, tell your friends that are going to these games. It's a remarkably different volleyball game when the student section is there because they're so loud. Again, and all of a sudden, the other team, it's intimidating to figure the other team and there's a student section. So yeah, it's great to encourage your fellow students to
They're all very excited. I know for like the past week, we just keep hearing people go, don't do anything on Tuesday. We have a volleyball game on Tuesday. You have to do it by past week.
Yeah. And so the trick is they can do a lot of things until the principal comes over and says that's too much. So you've got to figure out where that comes in. It's great to see the students there and I'm glad they're starting to breathe and breathe. Thanks.
Thank you.
Donate?
Hey. Salem Education Foundation donated a thousand dollars for teacher supplies. Mitchell May and Nora May donated a thousand dollars for student needs. And Philip Vaughn and Barbara Sisk donated thirty-five dollars for free intake medication for the ACT program.
Alright, thank you. The next thing on the agenda, and the donations are, are part, accepting of the donations are part of the consent agenda. Uh, the next thing on the agenda is the minutes from our August fourth and August tenth meeting. We have a chance to review them. Is there a motion to adopt these minutes? So, Mr. Groves, are you second? Second, Mr. Uben, any comment? All favor, I? I oppose, no? This one, Mr. Groves, have you had opportunity to review bills?
I have and everything looks to be in order.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda which contains the approval for donations, paying the bills, the attempts report, the homeschool report? We have a motion from the bottom for a second. Second, Mr. Meyer, all favor, I? I oppose, no? This one, amendment to approve the tentative.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, the first item, fourth point one, is an overview of our local contact tracing process. Um, so Robin Murray, our OCS nurse and community worker, she's a senior here to share, um, the industry well, but I'll just start it off. Just a second here. Alright, so lots happened since we started school. If you remember, we developed this system last year. A dynamic data-driven decision-making process that is designed to use actual contextualized data that occurs in your buildings, in your community, um, to make decisions about where you're going next. Move this part of the body. Stand on this one. Alright. Um, so as of August third, using that logic, we, we looked at our data. It still looks pretty decent compared to using what, um, we had put in place last year. So looking at those trends, um, that's, and then a lot of discussion happened between there with state guidance changes and, and a lot of people in Richmond trying to figure things out as well. Um, rapid dynamic starts really early in the school year comparatively to other school districts. So, um, we were sort of thrown into this figuring it out as we were building a plane in the air with a lot of guidance coming in from Richmond, a lot of information in the community, a lot of controversy over a lot of different things. Um, so everyone, I think, knows how collectively we've arrived at this point. A lot of legal considerations that we were trying to figure out really quickly about access to learning and funding. Understanding what extent practicable means, vague language in some of these orders and how to deal with um, some exemption language and, and all of these pieces. So it was a lot to figure out in short order after we had already started. Um, which we, we are sorry for that, that we had to go through all those motions. Um, so the school board gave consensus to continue using a data-driven, dynamic decision-making matrix, glaring additional medication as data indicated. And that included masking mandates with the government's order initially. Um, because of the language there seemed to imply that, that you did have some flexibility. Um, after we started, the health commissioner put out a more clarified emergency language that then stated that yes, now everyone regardless of vaccination status, despite CDC, even though they said high transmission areas only. Now in K-12 settings, everyone should be masked. However, there were, um, those exemptions to deal with and different schools. It's still in the order that you can provide medical exemptions and certain non-religious objection exemptions. Okay. Um, so the school year began and we very quickly saw how the Delta variant was very contagious as soon as it infiltrated the, um, the school doors. So when we had that happen and using the parameters that we had from BDH, um, the quarantining was, was exploding very quickly, with very few cases initially. Alright, so with that, we have everyone in. And at the beginning, we weren't cohorting students for lunch and recess. We had normal state sports PE. Um, there were optional maskings at first, but then it was encouraged to accept those who applied for an exemption. And even at the beginning of the year, we had very few exemptions at the elementary school. Only fifteen students, uh, parents applied for exemptions at the elementary. And we still had quite a few quarantined cases happening there. Many more at the high school. But, um, when we had to go into containment, when we had those cases skyrocket that first week, um, that's when we put in place everything we could. We closed down for that four-day period to really look at all the cases, do our local contact tracing, consult with BDH experts, um, and then re-employ, implement some of these things. And as you can see, that's what the data did that first couple of weeks. So thirty-two cases in the school district in that first two weeks. So, um, I'll show some more when I do the well check about our data and how that's changed. Um, but I do want to invite Robin Murray to the podium to go through this because BDH is awesome. They are wonderful, but tracing at that level is very tedious and time-consuming. You're waiting days. Before the interview for the first exposed person or the positive person is interviewed. And by then, when you, that time has elapsed and then you're, um, talking to those who are exposed, more time goes and the risk goes up. So every hour that goes by increases that risk for additional exposures, right? So we needed that short switch to distance learning, regroup, um, and find a new solution. Because we were watching other schools around us too and I'll show you a data chart about that too. And a lot of them did start, like there was, uh, quite a few that said, you know, masks required for everybody, but they were having the same issues. Lots of quarantines, lots of cases. Um, so something happened to change and this, we think we found a solution. Tell you what.
Alright, so thank you board for having us here tonight. And first, before I get started on this, um, it's gonna be in the future slide, but I'm gonna introduce these ladies. And, um, I just want to thank everybody in the community and staff and board and faculty for support in this. Um, and so we have Kim Cox, who is helping do a lot of our data collection. We have Lee Bernstein, who's helping us with a lot of, a lot of our, um, uh, different Facebook that we're gonna be promoting tonight and different, um, software. And then we have Ms. Viviana, who has been helping us with all of our translations. We also have Courtney Atkins, who's the high school, uh, school nurse and athletic character. And then we also have, um, uh, Michelle Mitchell, who also oversees, um, a lot of our data. So let's talk real quick. So rapid dynamic, you guys know when we started school, the very first day, we had a positive case. And as these cases started coming in, we were like, okay, maybe it's just gonna be a couple. And we found that to be very different than what we expected. And so based on our data, um, we sat down and had a meeting with Dr. Rinsley and with, um, our epidemiologist and at BDH and said, listen, we have a problem. We started school before any other school district. This is what we're seeing. How do we stop it? And at that time, BDH gave us the direction to not close, to follow the process, to continue to quarantine, to trust the system. And I did not feel comfortable with that. So in conversation with Dr. Rinsley, um, I requested that we do a short-term distance learning because I felt confident, as strong as this community is, that we could step into place, work with the teachers, work with administration, and we could get a plan back into action because we know what worked last year. And the data say we only had thirteen positive cases last year, the entire year. We're at forty-three. So in that time, we had about twelve cases and so we switched to distance learning. And let's talk about what that looked like. Right away, we knew when we restarted school on that Monday, that we were gonna do cohorting of students for lunches and recesses. Lunch returns to the classroom instead of being in the cafeteria because that was our number one place for quarantine. We, we turned to separated recess by class. Um, the, we put all of the pandemic safe protocols back in for sports and PE when they resumed. We put, um, I said breakfast and lunch in the classroom, uh, universal masking for all students regardless of vaccine, vaccine status. Um, so we even told the people who had, um, had previously put in medical reasons and filled out those to, um, mask for the next thirty days. And then we had, um, additional planning and disinfecting. That was something that didn't go away from last year. We kept that. Um, plexiglass barriers, we started with those. Um, distance whenever possible, we were already doing. And then, um, we restructured schedules. Administration and teachers all worked very hard for those four days. Um, they were in here in person, um, and rescheduled their full structure of how we were gonna do offices and exploratories. Um, so thank you to the teachers for the, the hours made for them. We did limit the exploratory from a six-day rotation to a two-day rotation. And then we, what we were finding when we went and did, um, observations of all the classrooms is spacing. So last year, um, we had, you know, less students in the building and we were here less days. So you bring all your students back and you try to fit twenty-two people in a classroom three feet apart. What we found was podding and that has been our number one success in keeping our quarantine numbers down. And what we do is we pod the students together based on, um, numbers and our real picture of that. It's all over in detail in a minute. So podding and seating is a huge, um, a huge factor in us being successful with this model. So, um, Dr. Rinsley gave us this amazing name, NCIS, no COVID in school. So, and that is, um, we have worked and trained and gone through the process. We have also walked Dr. Rinsley and our administration through this entire process until ten o'clock one night. So they got to speed the process. Um, we did, um, we had each of us sign covenantality agreements. Each team member has a specific role. And they did do a site review, so thank you for that. Um, teamwork, you know, we worked with the teachers and the staff and mitigation processes that we put back into place. And then educating the parents is what we have found was that the number one thing that we need to, um, continue to do in our communities. Alright, so we have Tanya, she's doing demographic and plus, she's doing all of our demographic lifting. Michelle, data entry. Lee Bernstein, um, has helped with all of our internal data spreadsheets that were below their minds. We can show them to you. Um, and then we have Viviana, who's been translating and doing all of our coordination for seating charts and touch charts. Uh, Courtney Atkins, who's been our backup go-to. Um, and then all of the group is responsible for interviews, contact tracing, and phone calls of exposures. Then we have, this is our school. So I'm the board. You can see that the teachers, um, they work so hard. We went into every classroom and took a picture, um, an aerial view of every classroom. And with that, it helps us not only can zoom in and count tiles and see how far each desk is, but we can have a better idea because if you look, we had all of our teachers put seating charts in Power School or Google. And with that, it makes it really hard to see a visual. So on the left, you'll see, um, this is a kindergarten classroom. And on the right is a fourth grade classroom. But we have even up to our high school classrooms try to pod. And the podding, as long as they are three feet from, from another pod or six feet when they're eating in the classroom, then you limit your quarantine to one or two people versus six to eight people. Because of the diameter, if they're sitting in rows. So it took a little bit of science and playing with several classrooms, but we did figure this out and it's been super helpful. Um, I cannot thank our elementary school teachers enough. They have gone to be so detailed. If you see this chart, every child has a number or color and every child sits on the carpet the same way they sit at their desks next to the same person they sit at their desk. And that is also the same person that they line up with and walk through the halls with. So if you're gonna be, if student number six is positive, then we look at student number six down five and seven versus the entire class. So we would like to get, and BDH would like for us to get, to where we do not quarantine an entire class, but we can quarantine close contacts. So, um, thank you to our teachers and we also have the same thing for our subscribers. Then you have a little glimpse of what our COVID tracking system looks like. Um, this data piece is unbelievable. Um, so thank you to Lee and all of us. I mean, it constantly changes and we come up with new ideas of what's working and what's not. Um, if we have a positive case, they're entered in. Um, there's actually a way for you to scan a QR code and let us know that you're positive. It sends an email alert to the entire team. And it's entered into our database right away. Then we take that information and on each individual student, there's a form that looks like this. All of that information is set up to collectively add to our quarantine list. So we can actually see that we have three hundred and seventy-three students quarantined. Most of them multiple times, but since the beginning. Um, and most of them are related to the same case. So some of them are on there multiple times, but it doesn't mean that, you know, they've had three hundred and seventy-three of them. It's just multiple times. And so, but on the side, it also tells us how many students are quarantining, how many staff are quarantining, um, and how many people are affected by each individual case, when they can return. And then all of that information is collectively added into our main front sheet that shows how many cases we had. And it's also an expansion. So thank you Viviana. So, yeah, so this is pretty amazing and I will say that BDH has asked for this template so that they can share it with other school systems. So we will be going on the road and presenting. So that's really exciting, right? We have more time for that. Alright, so next, um, we heard the parents. We heard the staff and we heard everybody asking for transparency. It's not that we were not trying to be transparent. I know the phone calls that Ms. Johnson and Dr. Rinsley were putting out were very time-consuming and I asked Shannon, we both talked about a dashboard last year. We saw that several other school systems were doing a dashboard and I was like, we need to do a dashboard. So Holly Jenkins, thank you to her, put this fabulous dashboard together and I report to her every Monday, Wednesday, and Friday with the number of students in the elementary school and high school, staff in both locations, and the amount of students that we have quarantined. So, um, I do want to point out to parents in the audience that please note on the bottom of our dashboard, and for the board members, if you're looking at it, it only, um, demonstrates and it shows the people that are affected by our school system. So if a student calls and they tested positive, but they weren't in our building for greater than forty-eight hours, it is not counted in our dashboard because it does not count towards our school system. So that's where you need to go to BDH and you need to follow their dashboard. Um, because if it hasn't been forty-eight hours that the child's been in the building, then it hasn't exposed any of our staffers' students. So we do not report that one on our dashboard. Then we have, um, this next slide, I really wanted to try to capture. Um, I know we can't show you our caseload because it has student names. I really wanted to capture for you guys what we saw in the beginning, um, is the screen on the left. And this was before the shutdown and we were seeing huge numbers of students being quarantined and affected by the way we were doing things and things that were in place. Um, I can tell you that the sixty-eight number was because of the cafeteria and the gym. So those were the two things that we had to look at right away. Um, and you can see after our shutdown what happened. So, um, you'll see two different colors up there. Red means on our main display a case that, um, that case would come off the dashboard. That's all the colors are. Green means it's still an active case. Um, and this was from a few days ago. So, um, you can see how our numbers of quarantine dropped off. And it's really cool to look at the dashboard and see what our shutdown did. And BDH did request that information as well, um, and they're looking into how we did that. Um, so then the next thing that I wanted to do is educate parents and staff and on symptoms that we're seeing. So the first three are the most common symptoms that I'm seeing. Scratchy, a sore throat, congestion, headache, cough. I'm sure most of the people in this room have suffered from common allergies. Every person who has told me that it's just allergies, test positive. So, um, fever, I've had less than six cases with all the fever. Smell and taste, less than four started with that symptom and less than ten have it after the ten days. Um, or progress within two days. Upset stomach, we've seen honda and diarrhea. But the most, um, the most symptoms are mild and resemble that common cold or allergies. So if your child has no symptoms, please get them home, contact the COVID hotline, my phone number, and go through that with us before they return. Um, and most students have had two or less symptoms at once. So everybody thinks that COVID, you have to have all the symptoms. You don't. You can have one or two symptoms and you're positive. Okay? And that's just from our symptom deck. I'm only going by what we're seeing in our school system. Alright, so what are some questions that we're getting from the general public that we're gonna have on Facebook? Is, can I get COVID if I'm vaccinated? This is the number one question that I get. And the answer is yes. Vaccines are not a hundred percent effective at preventing infection. Vaccines are effective at preventing infection, serious illness, and death. So you can see that on the cdc dot gov website, um, and they are made to help lessen, uh, the effects of COVID. I will tell you what we're seeing with vaccinated people that are testing positive. They typically do not start with symptoms until day five to ten of an exposure. Alright, so most people start with symptoms in day two to four. We're seeing later in the, um, symptom pattern because you're vaccinated. Number two is, do you have to have a fever or don't you have to have a fever to have COVID? You do not have to have a fever. As you saw, a majority of my students have not had a fever. Um, the fever is considered a hundred point four or higher. Um, a majority of what I'm seeing is between ninety and ninety-nine. Okay? And that's not classified, um, as a fever. Do siblings have to quarantine if my child is considered close contact exposure? They do not. And that is because they were not directly exposed. So if the exposed person then starts with symptoms, then everybody in the household has to quarantine unless you're vaccinated. Vaccinated people can return to work and normal activities. Vaccinated people can return to work and normal activities unless they start with symptoms. So, the rule of thumb here is, if you have any symptoms, stay home. And keep your family home until you're tested and proven to be negative. So, that's the biggest questions that we get as a COVID team. And then I wanted to go over mine. Alright, scenarios. So, these are the exact same scenarios. Can you guys remember the reopening plan that we had last year? These are printed in the reopening plan and these are what we used to send students home last year. Number one, if you have symptoms present and we are in a low risk or low risk of transmission in our community, then you just stay home for 24 hours until your fever free and symptoms have improved, okay? Number two is, symptoms present and you've had a known exposure. You have to stay home for 10 days from the first day of symptoms. You have to, if you have a negative COVID day, COVID test, they say 10-day quarantine from the first day of symptoms due to the exposure. If you have a positive COVID test, there is no question, everybody gets a 10-day quarantine with a positive COVID test from the first day of symptoms. The next one is what we're in right now. So symptoms are present, but there's no risk of exposure. But we are in a moderate to high risk. We are in a high risk in our pandemic kind right now. And these are the only four ways that you can get your child back to school. You can either stay home for 10 days from the first symptom. If they have symptoms, you know, so this is symptoms present. Negative test and they are fever free and symptoms are improving within 24 hours. Positive test, there that is again, no matter what, you can stay home for 10 days. And then you can return if you get an alternate diagnosis, such as if your child had a headache and they have known headaches, or they have asthma and they have known asthma and they have a cough, or they have an earache, those types of things. So if it's a known diagnosis and it's alternate, and they are fever free and their symptoms are improving, they can return in 24 hours. So those are our return scenarios that we have. And then, yeah, you want to talk about this? Because we developed the whole thing. Okay, so basically, we have a Facebook page that is called the RCPS Nurse's Corner. We did this before today officially, as we found it, this is what the product looks like. Now, we've developed a, right now, it'll obviously do a lot of conversation about COVID, educating, providing information about upcoming clinics, types of symptoms we're seeing. You go on the page, you'll see we pinned the link to the Google form where you can report those positive cases and I have our COVID hotline number on it. But this is also hopefully going forward, going to this BSbase.gov, Nerf Act and Nerf Center where you can use just for public health information. So, you know, reminders about, you know, how to wash your hands, it's flu season, what does that mean? What does it look like? How to keep, you know, flu season, stay home, take a nap, you know, catch up on sleep, things like that. So, the goal is not just to be COVID-centered, but obviously I think we'll have a lot of discussion on that. And we will be launching, there will be an incentive to follow and quarantine in the next few days. So, if you're only in it for the five weeks. Thank you, Lil. So, I just want to say again, we, this community has been the most innovative community that I've seen to make sure that we are doing the best for our students, keeping our staff safe, and then also just loving our community. So thank you so much for your support. We continue to answer questions as much as we can. And just remember that we're going by EDH guidelines and as things change, we will make sure that you guidelines are updated. Thank you.
Questions, Ron, or the team?
I've got it. Yeah, the, could you go back to, where we report? If COVID positive is reported and the student has been not been in school for 48 hours, then that's not a school case? Is that so?
Correct.
But then, explain to me how there's a five to seven day incubation period. If a youngster is reported on Monday, they haven't been in school for two days, but they could have been positive Friday or Thursday, why is that not a school case?
So, the way we do that is, the EDH says we go by 48 hours prior to the symptom onset. So the best example of this is that if they do start on Monday and you back up 48 hours, takes us to Saturday. And so they were not around anybody on Friday or, you know, if they were around them, they weren't considered contagious yet. Your body doesn't, so once you get your viral load, your body doesn't start shedding the virus until 48 hours prior to you starting symptoms. So, EDH has us go by the 48-hour rule and that's how they have us contact trace. And they, yeah, and based on our data, that's what we're seeing.
It would be more common sense to say that there, I mean, you said there was a five to seven day incubation period. But is that the incubation period that?
That's for vaccinated. What we're seeing is like, and that's not, it's not an incubation period. So for your vaccinated people, we're not seeing them, so if they've been exposed, so say I'm exposed on Monday and I'm vaccinated, then typically what we're seeing with those people is that they don't, the exposed person doesn't start with symptoms if they're vaccinated until probably day five. So that's when we, but when that person starts with symptoms, then we back up everything that they did on Thursday and on Wednesday and we contact trace all of that.
There you go, okay. So that's the caveat.
Yes, yeah. Yeah, and just so you guys know, a typical case in the beginning took us about six to eight hours to contact trace. We pull video footage, we pull bus cameras, we go in and measure the rooms. Dr. Grimsley has seen this all. And so, a large case can take us around six hours. And then a medium case for our school system is anywhere between three, four hours. And a smaller case that doesn't really affect anybody takes one to two hours.
I, yeah, I just want to convey that.
This team has been amazing.
To be a nurse in a public school system today, I don't think we understand. And when you check out at the end of the day, that's not the end of your day. I know the public continues to ring, there's people got a call. It's, so you've made a career choice, a change at probably a terrible time, right?
I took this job in October 2020, never expecting that it would be like this, but yes.
Anyway, say thanks to your team and.
I have another question as well. Thanks, I have two questions actually. We're going back to the dashboard for a minute. So, if we're going to learn something from what has happened in the last past month where we had a case in the beginning, we had an explosion of cases, just as the incubation period where we had very crowded, unmasked events right in this school and then the other school. If we're going to learn anything from what happened, it would be really helpful for the school to provide data over time. But the piece of this dashboard that is confusing and doesn't feel very transparent is that we, I mean, we're not seeing, all we're seeing is the mask stuff, right? We're not, usually you can navigate. When I experienced it with the dashboard, you can navigate and say, where were we a week ago? Where were we two weeks ago? And then you can see a line that might look like this, and then it might kind of go down. And then you can say, oh, what happened when it went down? Oh, we started wearing masks, everybody started wearing masks. Not those people who felt like wearing masks. And so, that would be helpful for us to keep an institutional memory about what happened and all the quarantines and the stress, frankly, that happened. When we've had so many people quarantined, both on the side with families, students had no kids home, and on the side of people who were worried that they might get really sick, that they might spread it to other young members. So I'd love to see, and then, I think we have the old dashboards of data over time so that we can learn something, because we're not actually only living in front of, you know, we're at school, we're about learning, and we learn from the six, you know, we're probably going to say, you're hardest to the six, and that's how we can make progress, but we'll see that.
Is that, so this EDH is a time, the EDH display that's in that 48, is a time domain? It shows us that over time, right? We integrate part of the EDH display into our presentation, like it would give us more time. And it requires us to do more.
I don't want to get ahead of the next slide, and the well check, I knew I am collecting that and I'll show you a chart and if you guys are okay with that, that's what we'll.
That we're learning for, yeah.
We can do a graphic EDH chart.
Very good. I mean, they might actually have us running EDH things, so. They don't care, actually.
Just split your hours, do you?
Yeah.
Then let's bring up a point there, so other counties are going to start calling for help. And we have to figure out a new billing model, right? Right? Because we work hard, we wear a lot, we have tools, and we're going to be sharing those, but.
My other question, I'm sorry, Ron, you're fine. But, but, yeah, the question about symptoms, like I've read quite a bit about asymptomatic spread and I'm just curious where that guidance comes from? You know, I've heard people who are vaccinated having high viral loads, but then just kind of doing high, it's just allergies and it wasn't anything more. And that's, so how should we deal with it? Should we be advised with testing with slight symptoms or? I'm just wondering what they're saying, what they're saying as a professional.
So, prior to, I don't know if anybody's been watching the numbers, but a couple of days ago, EDH reported 4,400 positive cases in the state of Virginia in one day.
Close, closing the closure is my.
So they reported 4,400 positive cases in one day in the state of Virginia. And certainly we've been watching that dashboard, but it's very interesting to me. And here's the, here's the issue, and this is, you know, COVID's changed constantly with EDH, but we are working with them and we give them suggestions because we are not seeing the classic symptoms. It is like a chronic cold. But to answer your question is, not only, we have only had one asymptomatic positive, so just so you know, we have been keeping that data. And so with that though, what we're seeing with these symptoms are pretty widespread and other counties, if you start talking to them, that's what they're seeing as well, these common allergy symptoms. And so, I can tell you that testing sites are inundated right now. I have two people who literally could not find anywhere to test the past few days and they can't get an appointment till Friday. Okay, so that's a real issue with testing. So if you are asymptomatic, I do not encourage you to get tested and most test sites will even define it right now because they are only taking the sick people to test. And so, it's hard because we do know, there is data out there that there are asymptomatic people. And so, I'm careful with going and getting tested if you've been caught with exposure. If you develop symptoms, then go get tested.
I just heard today from a family of health nurses that they don't have any evidence left.
There, it's, you know, it.
So although we've had only mild cases here, that's not really, that's, we're very lucky at this point, you know? The more cases we have, the more serious cases there might have, yes.
Should we not conduct a rapid testing?
Actually, we do, Matt. We are, actually, there's a couple of things. So with our wellness center, we do offer point-of-care testing, especially for symptomatic individuals that can triage through the nursing clinic, that can go and get a test with consent that are signed. So that's great, the volume has been higher, so we are working with EDH right now. The state itself has a Vista screening program. We are more interested in diagnostic on the, on the point testing because we've gotten it so close now, we can really hone in in a screening. And as our EDH epidemiologist said, that really wouldn't do anything for you all except get your percent positivity right now. Not really, that helps you get through the cases you need to. So, in that case, we're looking at diagnostic on top of our wellness center. So hopefully we can get those kits here. There's some, you know, we have to jump through and get a clear waivers for the standard order and all of that stuff. So, we are working on that right now.
That's great.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Can you start everything?
So you're going on the road, you're a teacher, what else can I do?
You know, we'll see. They're calling already.
Thank you ladies so much.
Would be a good, a good program for the conference.
Yeah, actually, they've been talking to us right now. And when I get to the well check and some of these other presentations at the end, I'll kind of show you what we're talking about, what we're seeing in other schools. Because primarily, the mask game became such the main issue that it kind of gave a lot of people, the shops included, I think, a false sense of security, concern with masks. And then you really have to hone in on some of these other pieces because it's, you know, like Swiss cheese layer. Okay, the holes aren't the same things, right? But when you put them all together, you can get as much coverage as you can. So looking at all of those pieces, but the contact tracing is the critical piece. Because what happens with Delta, as we've seen, you have, whereas the old Alpha COVID was one case you get two or three, maybe other ones, one case can expose and maybe go to about eight. So if you can't hone in on that initial exposure, identify those exposures, have it be one to eight, one to eight ratio, it gets an exponential break, masks or no masks. Because a lot of these places will have PE, exercise, lunch, and it's, you know, so it will get exponential regardless. So that's where they're struggling because they said, okay, we did all of these things, but then the local contact tracing team and staff capacity in schools is one of the number one things. And then the pods have been super helpful. And setting up classrooms strategically, teachers really gave us great feedback, like Ron was saying about the numbers and the cohorts and keeping whole groups of students together. It is a little stressful because, you know, we're very excited to get people together and the kids, but the kids are adjusting. And I think what we saw was, and we get, like I said, the other one, our community just banded together. And we haven't had issues with compliance and they've been cooperating and they understand. And basically the quarantines, regardless of how we feel about transmission rates in masks, what is irrefutable is the diameter doubles for quarantine circles. So if you do that math, I can, you know, guarantee that if you, if you're not masked, you have much higher chance of being quarantined and happy to stay home based on EDH guidance. So that's what we're trying to limit with our distancing and all of these things. We have to follow EDH rules, they make rules, we just don't make them. But we're trying to find creative ways to play in a way that gives kids that sense of spirit and, you know, fun school experience despite all the challenges we have. So thank you ladies, that team is incredible. Started off as a joke because I walked by their situation room, as they call it, it's very confidential. Nobody can go in there, it's a very authorized personnel. And it seriously looks like a situation room from NCIS. So I was thinking, man, it's good, they got a big board and all these charts and polls and video rolling. I'm like, oh my gosh. And then if you went down later, NCIS, you knew that because I had no COVID in schools and that became the.
According to New Orleans. NCIS and New Orleans.
Ooh. Alright, so moving on, 4.2 is the food service bits that are given to me by the nutrition department. And every year I just make you aware of the vendors that cafeterias will be using. Pretty much the same list. We have used micro purchases, we'll continue for local farmers throughout the year that don't necessarily call in or bid. And we're still using meals plus for our software. And please don't ask me too many questions about this, this is not my expertise area, but they have it well under control. Ms. Julie Banks and Karen McCruff have been taking a more active role in running the cafeterias. They're doing an outstanding job. Alright, new state growth assessments. I did want to update the board on this, but I know there's been a lot of information out in the media about how Virginia is now assessing students. So for testing and accreditation, our annual accreditation is waived again as are all other schools for the 21, 22 academic year because of the continuing impact of COVID. We've seen significant learning loss state and nationwide because of the pandemic. And unfinished learning needs to be assessed and addressed. Of course, we know the educational consequences that we've had, the interrupted and disrupted learning environment, opportunity gaps greatly exacerbated, especially for students in poverty and those who lack internet access. There's limitations of standardized tests which reward that narrow set of skills, especially more affluent students. So what we, we're really talking to the state quite good about was that we need resources and relief so we can provide effective remote learning. School systems needed to invest in extra supports and interventions and resources to ameliorate those gaps that we're seeing, and that's what we've developed with our destruction plan this year. Also, must rebuild and redesign our conventional systems to integrate cognitive development and socio-emotional skill development intertwined as we saw a great deal of gap there. As we saw a great deal of gap there. Um, so here, I'm sorry. Um, so this is what we did last year when we saw that, um, the impact was happening even with our partial in-person. Um, after examining our first quarter grade last year, it became abundantly clear failing grades were due uh, to more learning, remote learning behavior rather than what students actually knew. And that became a real diagnostic measure we needed to hone in on, um, to be sure we understood what mastery our student, the level of mastery our students really had, what interventions, what we need to invest in coming the next year if we could get more in-person time with students. Um, so last year we did additional time to make up assignments. Uh, we used Wednesday school, Saturday study hall, um, additional resources, and we implemented social emotional learning curriculum. Our testing outcomes from last year, remember they did give S O Ls. Um, it's kind of skewed data because we have a lot of remote learners and some refuse to participate statewide. And so the data isn't great, but it's a good data point to show where we're just kind of starting off. We were pretty, um, decent in reading and so was the state. Um, so here you see R C S, R C H S, R C P S as a division compared to the state part that's all the way up and right. So in reading, we, we held our own pretty well. Um, saw very little loss there and that was a huge concentration was on the reading, um, especially in primary because we're most concerned with that loss because it takes so much, uh, critical literacy development, biological awareness. And all those things are very difficult to do if you're not in person, um, and you, when you can't see somebody's face too. Uh, so we put a lot of attention into this and so did the state. That was an area of concern statewide. Math, nobody did that well in math, uh, cumulative skills development. Um, uh, we saw the similar learning loss that happened in math as the state did. And that's why we started hiring of a math specialist to address this concern for this year. So we use this data to use our Ezra funds strategically to address whatever gaps that we saw. Science, kind of the similar thing. Um, we didn't have time slot allocations very much for other subjects. Math and reading were, um, especially reading and literacy were, um, among the top priorities statewide. And that came from state guidance and, uh, from the school system. So science, we need to build that up, which is usually pretty simple to do once you have more hands-on learning labs and there's opportunities with kids in the classroom. And as you remember, last year we had a lot of waivers with these tests because you couldn't locally award verified credit that would not be measured on the standardized test with other artifacts. And we were really close. A lot of our L A B C eligibility rates got us to a point where we were in the nineties with a pass rate if you were to combine those numbers. Um, so we were even with those scores a little lower than we'd like. When you combine the eligibility, L A B C, the local awarded verified credit combination rate, right here was very successful. And our students graduated and didn't have to miss out on those requirements. And the state gave that flexibility to all the schools seeing that same similar scale gap. If that makes sense. Um, so the new growth assessments. Sorry, I'm trying to manage Zoom and this at the same time. I can juggle just. All right. So the new growth assessments, uh, twenty twenty-one, Virginia general assembly action uh, required these new assessments to be completed by students in the fall and spring. Twenty twenty, this, this school year, twenty-one, twenty-two, the grades breeze through a reading and math measure growth. This is something we've been talking about for quite a long time. Something we were trying to develop ourselves in a more dismattered assessments and pre-tests and, uh, so we've been in this camp for a very long time, measure growth and give us credit for showing progress with students. Um, growth assessments won't provide a pass fail. This is really diagnostic only. So the focus will be on identifying what students have learned, what skills they need help with during the school year. And the full implementation of these won't happen until the next school year. Um. These tests typically are administrate, um, administered. And these will be the same ones for the growth assessments. They're going to assess prior year content up to a point to determine at what level the gap exists between the entire curriculum product and, um, that that continues to be. So it's a true growth measure. For those who are accelerated, it will also go into current year content as well and tell us, okay, maybe you did really well remote learning and you just kind of went through the content. It will tell us at what level you're at too. So we, we don't want to forget our bid with students either. Want to be sure they're accelerating and continuing to be enriched too. It's about everybody should have showed growth. Um, so what is it going to report? It's going to give us a really good student detail by question, um, data points to tell us at what level, um, students are achieving, what content is missing. Um, and where we should, and what, what level of difficulty, depth of knowledge the students are recording at. Um, they are working to develop a parent portal by the E D O E, the state department of education. And they hope to have this out in late fall, um, where parents can actually go in and get a plane code and see how their students are faring on these assessments. Uh, so we're hopeful for that. We've actually given several already over the past couple of weeks. Um, so we'll, we're really interested in seeing that data. And then they are finally going to use this stuff in accrediting schools eventually when the accreditation is no longer waived. And the way they're going to do that is they take your base pass rate, I have a little chart here. Um, and if you show student growth in that content area, they will add that student. And also they're paying a lot more attention to your age, the language learned. So if you make latest proficiency progress for those students, they will also add. Uh, so your test rate make them a six, your pass rate would have been a six out of ten, sixty percent on this example. Um, but with the combined growth rates added, nine or 18 percent combined rate is your showing growth. Um, so that's in a nutshell what the growth assessments are. They're shorter assessments. The students are doing pretty well with them. Um, doesn't take too much time. Test the demonstration, very similar to S O Ls, um, but not the same level of intensity. Any questions?
That was actually my question about, so what is it like for the students? Like they're having two sets of tests which are often for having anxiety producing students.
Yeah. So there's, the administration of them is similar. There is a, um, it's not as strict as the S O L. So requiring the students are just, this is for us to know where you're at. There's no, you know, um, there's nothing punitive, no grading, no pass fail. So the kids are like, oh, thank you. That's my goodness. And so it's been much better.
Yeah.
Yeah. So that's the way we've been presenting it. Um, and they, so far I haven't heard of any concerns with that. And it hasn't been made a big issue because it's not, this is diagnostic for all of us to understand where we, where we are and how we can address it. Um, so that's the way we're approaching it. So it's not so scary.
This is exciting. You know, we fought for something like this twenty years ago when S O Ls first began. Maybe twenty-five years ago. Where, where, where you measured how much a youngster learns as opposed to some test score up here at the top of the world. And secondly, are we going to be able to provide the data that we get to the individual kid?
Mm-hmm. Yeah. And the parents will access that too. So we'll know exactly where they are when we make decisions about interventions or placements in certain groups. Now we'll have all this data to show, well, this is why, this is the gap we're seeing. This is how we can come up with an instructional plan to make sure we can mitigate that gap as quickly as possible.
So each, each teacher will have that significant data.
Absolutely.
And counts for it as well.
Yes, and our teams will. And that's it. As an overall, um, we get the strands, the strand question, uh, detail. It's really detailed. So we will have.
This is really cool.
Yeah, it's in development still. So, and that's why also it's, you know, it's not a full rollout just yet. Just like when we field test items on the S O Ls and things. So they won't count against anybody, but they're feeling it all out to see, um, how, how it works. And parents will, will want that feedback from you all too about, you know, the interfacing of that because we can provide that to D O E. I'm sure they're going to be looking for that as well. Okay?
And you said this about the parent portal.
Mm-hmm.
So this, there, you say they're working on it.
Mm-hmm.
But it says here for the fall, twenty twenty-one growth assessment. So they're working on it so that it can be seen in the coming school year.
Yes, they, they hooked up the test that we just administered. You know, the parents will be able to get a code to go in and see their child's score.
Right.
So I haven't seen any links or anything to that data portal yet, but as soon as we know that it's available and how to access it, we'll be sure to communicate that.
Right.
Okay, um, very quickly, we posted the V S B A policy updates here for you. Um, hopefully for adoption, there really wasn't much change, um, at all. One was a typographical error and the other was just some language that has to change because of code change about unexempt employee comp time. Uh, so if you could, um, go to that tonight, that would be great. And it doesn't actually matter later. All right. And then our regular well check update that we do as a standing item. So this is our current dashboard updated, um, just yesterday. Um, like we don't do quarantines until every Friday. However, the team has gotten, the N C I S team has gotten so good and in particular about all of that data, they believe they can now do it every two days. So starting Wednesday, we plan to update quarantine data Monday, Wednesday and Friday as well. So you'll be able to see an accurate, more accurate picture. Um, so right now this was based on the Friday numbers and we were at seventeen, uh, earlier when I, when I checked. So seventeen total quarantines right now. Here's that chart I think we're related to, um, about where we started and where we're, um, going. All right. So there's that data dashboard, um, from the beginning when we launched it. So as you can see, um, we started much higher, especially that gray bar that's your quarantines. Yeah. And then, um, came up a little bit here between the September sixth and the eighth. And it seems to be leveling out pretty well and coming down, but we still want it much lower under here. But, um, having this, that, that five cases as of yesterday is, is pretty astounding compared to where we were just a couple of weeks ago.
What, what is the line for?
It just shows you the trend of, of where the marks are going.
So, so she said in her presentation, we had thirty-two in the first two weeks and then we had, we had, we're not forty-two, so we had eleven additional. Yeah, because so it's, so it's significantly different. It was only a quarter of a minute.
Yes, significantly. Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am.
So that's the best progress.
So here's what the locality dashboard looks like for EDH right now. Um, so as you can see, they're seeing a similar thing. Uh, this is rapid in the community. So we're seeing it come down. All the epidemiologists and health directors we've been talking to on the calls seem to believe that we were having a quick spike and they should start to come back down to baseline. So hopefully it's peaking. Um, they won't truly know that, but looking at other models in other states who have peaked earlier, that's what they see. It's kind of rapid rise and then it starts to come down all along. So we keep doing what we're supposed to do. Hopefully we can get that back down to baseline soon. There you go. Um, but the transmission data in the whole state, we're all red. Um, so, yeah. Not much, not like there. So everywhere in the whole state is in high transmission right now.
It is what it is.
It is, but here's a, a pretty awesome slide right now. So, um, we took all the dashboards in the region just to compare and see how everyone is doing. And at this point in time, everyone has revert back to mask required. Now, every division does have to deal with exemptions because that is part of the order. You have to comply with that in certain, in different, um, districts, you know, a little differently. Um, but out of all of that, Rapid Hand currently has the lowest active case count in quarantines in our entire local region after having one of the biggest case doctors immediately. So thank you, N C I S, the community. That's amazing. Um, that's huge. And as you can see, um, we don't want our partners, um, in other districts going through this, but they are. Um, and they're having.
Can you type this sheet please, Seth?
She said that currently it's.
Seven's gone.
Oh, it's gone down since.
Since the winter in person.
Yesterday?
Mm-hmm.
Since yesterday?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So we also, our division that only has a little under eight hundred students, so how does it work, you know, presented wise however compared to other divisions?
We're still much lower and we're getting control of it much quicker. And as you can see, the quarantines in other districts are really getting out of control. And that's where we're, a lot of the districts are struggling and, and going to EDH saying, do we have any flexibility with all these quarantines? And there's, there's something else we can do. So the case counts, um, seem to be pretty relative if the other layer mitigations are in place. Um, a lot of districts don't have the staff capacity right now to hire local contact tracing teams. So relying heavily on, on EDH in most of that. So, and then you can look at uh, if you look at the rest of the Commonwealth in Frederickburg area, over a thousand COVID cases and over five thousand students that quarantined. Franklin County, over six hundred quarantined in their first two weeks, two hundred quarantined in Alamo first week. Surgeon Central Virginia, I leaked all of these. You can actually see it. So this is not our, like, just an isolated rapid handing problem. We just opened way earlier than everyone else. So we all got the same data, feedback and guidance and everything. So you can see this is not just us, but what we did was band together and really figured it, figured it out first. And we were able to share this out to whoever listens to us too. Um, we were asked to, um, and E D O E is asking for this data too, to, uh, survey our staff. So eighty-four percent of our, our C P S staff are fully vaccinated at this point. So that's amazing too, because initially our first dashboard, when they signed up, was only about sixty, sixty-five percent. We had estimated it was higher than that. So we're eighty-four percent right now. We have a vaccine clinic coming up. If you're one of those fifteen percent and you still want to get vaccinated or you're getting flu vaccine, that's this Thursday, four to seven P M. And it's free. It's Pfizer, age twelve and up, um, both your flu and COVID Pfizer vaccine. And we get it at the same time.
Is it, is it, you just sit in your car to get your shot or do you?
No, you go in to the elementary school. Yeah.
Do we have the clinic?
No, it's in the cafeteria. Then have, take, yeah, intake tables.
Oh, there's, oh, it's the, uh, yeah. People.
Yeah.
I think it's, it's the health department.
Right. The health department is running it. We're partnering with the county government as well to put that on for everybody. All right. Well, we do have a lot of early flu cases as we saw. Remember we had those nine flu cases that popped up that first week and a half or so. So flu is among us a lot earlier. So be ready for that too. Our wellness center has opened our onsite telehealth program. Of course, with anything starting, we've had to work out some tanks and, um, there's been a little bit of bottlenecking with the consent forms. Uh, so parents be on the lookout. We are going to send home a packet that kind of goes through all the list with those consent forms. Signing consent forms does not mean you have to, uh, partake in that service. It's only if you want. We will always ask for permission before bringing anybody over there. And nobody will be tested or given any, um, any care or anything without your, your permission. Uh, so we'll send packets home with that so you can have that upfront. Because when you do really want to be seen, and that's what we're seeing, we do have parents that sometimes, okay, now I really need my kid in there to be getting in. Okay, well, really need these in place before we can do anything. Um, so that's tying it up a little, but getting smoother. Um, and I have to give a little shout out to Holly and the Commit to Be Fit team because we are still really pushing on wellness and your own immunity and being healthy because ultimately that is your greatest weapon against anything. Um, so they have started this transformation program. So I know you could probably see a lot of that if you're on social media. It's incredible. The team has put together a stay at home workout, um, uh, program and you follow it and it's, it's just pretty intense and awesome. But easy to do to start off with and they provide great support and all these pictures and put together booklets and everything. It's really great. Um, so they can commit to be fit team. And that is our well check.
Great. Thank you. Any questions?
Yeah. Actually, I've been told, are we still basing our matrix on just rapid?
Right now, uh, our, our data, do you?
Yes.
Our matrix?
Yeah.
Or mitigation, you mean?
Right.
Yeah. So we're using our, our local data, but right now we're in containment mode. So we are not unlayering anything. And our recommendation at this point is we don't change anything. Don't change anything. We said we're going to touch anything for at least those thirty days. So, um, that's why there's nothing on the agenda to change anything, especially tonight. At October, you could consider based on any data, if you wanted to make any changes, but at this point, it's our recommendation, we don't change anything.
That, that, that makes a great deal of sense to me. I, I was, I, I was doing some research and I found that, that somebody had said, you know, rapid handing is not a, an island. So there's, believe it or not, there's two, over two thousand people in a new county every day. that leave the county every day to work, and that surprises the part of me, and there's nine hundred to a thousand that come into the county each week from the Rapid Hand, Rapid Hand region. And that's, uh, it's an interesting data that we should be looking at, because that's where they, the, we don't just have seven thousand people, we have more than that going back and forth in different, different areas. And I, we want to, I want to be thinking about maybe we ought to use the matrix based on the Rapid Hand, Rapid Hand county data that we talked about in the future.
You mean, we could expand the area to our whole health district?
Yeah.
And whether we change or, or unlayer some of those mitigations, if you look at our, you're saying to look at the wider district?
I'm, I'm saying that we should be looking at the, the Rapid Hand, Rapid Hand health district to create our mitigation process. In the future.
Do you, do you mean, so we have criteria within the model that says we will escalate and de-escalate based on metrics, right?
On, on the metrics, right.
I think we were already based on reading.
No, they're based on Rapid Hand metrics.
Or just our county, remember, there are times where we had Rapid Hand was a little greater.
Alright, so right now, we're, we were considered moderate, right? When we were here a month ago?
We were high.
Right?
A month ago, we were high.
We were high a month ago.
We were moderate.
We were moderate a month and a week ago, but we were high.
The last time we met, we were moderate.
No, we were high the last time we met, and we were moderate when we met the week before the meeting that we had in August.
Especially.
Yeah, especially me, we were, we were considered, we weren't, we weren't moderate, we were, we were at risk, we were the second from highs. And then, a month ago, you were high along with all of our surrounding boroughs, along with the surrounding towns. So you predicted what happened.
I'm just mentioning that for, for future, I know we're in the thirty-day rate of change, but it might be beneficial to be thinking along those lines. I just couldn't get over the number of people that come into the county and the number of people that leave the county and go to other places to work and are exposed to counties such as Waukegan and Warren that have the highest rates of, 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 of vaccinations.
So it's interesting that you bring that up too, because at the state level, and then at the state, and for the CDC and VDH, these local metrics were developed for schools to make dynamic decision making, based on, you know, what we learned last year, and that was our guidance from that. So recently, now that schools are reopening, they seem to be changing that tune as well. So they're not recommending using the same metrics, they are recommending now looking at your community transmission data that are taking it more weight, not just what's going on in your schools because your likelihood of getting it because of the contagious rate that they're seeing in that. So VDH has changed, so you won't see that same pandemic dashboard for school metrics on VDH anymore. So even if I wanted to use it, I'm sure I could pull up some of those data points, because they're not going to let us use that now. So, yeah.
So that's, so that's something that will change as we get...
I don't know, do we, do we need, do we need to modify what we did the last time, after the thirty-day process was open?
Well, and we're looking at this now that what we've learned, like I said, the administration and the NCIS team wouldn't recommend changing a thing until we get this thing sorted out and we see, you know, what the data's doing, can we do what we applied, just because it does infiltrate so quickly. We can get a better feel on it, because it is going to still continue, as long as these transmission rates look like this, we're going to still have it coming in. So we have to make sure that we limit the quarantines and limit that exposure as best we can, and we know we can stay open now at the highest rate. We can stay open, we can still operate, we can keep staff capacity up, and it does everybody's goal. So at this time, after seeing how it's acted and behaved and how it really hides its filter, because now it does, it looks like a whole new COVID, and we thought, we were getting ready for Delta period, we were serious, like, God, it was, and it's not, it's for us. For us, we're seeing very mild, they're saying allergies and sending this to school, thinking it's not a big deal, because we've been so accustomed to that, so it's a whole different thing. And with our vaccinated folks, rather than directly come home, but their symptoms are even completely different too, because they're coming on as a stomachache, a lot of GI stuff for our vaccinated, so it, it looks very different. So we've had to learn and adapt, and now that we know, we know how to handle it.
So can we ask you and the team to make a recommendation to the board, because I've heard a lot of anxiety, believe it or not, from parents about, about, about the possibility that we would, you know, maybe in a month or two, and when our local numbers are back, that there might be higher numbers in surrounding communities, that we might go back to what happened again and have another wave of COVID. I just want to do whatever we can to not have another wave, like, it will, we just, it's important, and you know, we all know in this room, it's important at school, right? So, so I'd just love to get any, as you reported this month, recommendations, if we need to change or if we need to, and if, because to some people, the idea of removing masks soon feels like an opportunity and a fun thing, for others, it feels like an opening of, of danger. And so I, I would love to see that you're not gonna, it's, it's love to have a counter view.
Well, and with the, the health commissioner's order, now that that's in place too, we don't really have a lot of flexibility, it can be an optional situation. There can, there are exemptions that people are allowed legally, where there's a lot that we have to deal with, and a lot of, and obviously, I haven't received any that have provided medical documentation that are ADA compliant for that reason, and that's what schools can request for documentation to remove that. So in those ways, that's what the recommendation is at this, at this time, once that lifts, so, but we have to deal with those, those exemptions.
Yeah, and they're very small, I remember it.
They're very small, yeah.
For, for what it's worth, I came for a salvo the other day, it was delightful, it was the, you know, I, I didn't see any, everything was just as calm as calm could be, and it was, it was schoolly usual for that.
And we're hopeful, we're hopeful, we can get a handle on this and get these numbers down, and other people follow, and, you know, more vaccinations get out, and we should see these numbers come down, and then order may be lifted. So that's kind of the goal right now, is get the health commissioner lifted for us, so then we don't have to, you know, play with all this litigation, you know.
Do we know what our over twelve vaccination rate is?
That, not yet, the state talked about that in a call today, they're trying to come up with a way that we can do that without, you know, me too intrusive, because it's not a requirement at this time, but we can certainly survey parents and, and, yeah, it may not be as accurate as we'd like, but...
Yes, there are some school districts that are requiring vaccines for, for employees.
Right.
Have you, have you any thoughts on that?
Have I, um, we haven't talked about this, administration too much, but it doesn't look like something that we can explore at this time, but that's a, more of a board policy decision.
I think that's part of the truth. Ask your...
Anything else?
Thank you, Dr. Greifley. Let's move on to the report from headwaters representative.
I did meet with the new headwaters director, Brittany Dwyer, who has taken the reins fully, and she's delightful, as we all know. The first item was that to mitigate the possibility of COVID spread during activities, the headwaters board unanimously voted to require COVID nineteen vaccination for all staff to have contact with students at this, at this month's meeting. At the previous month's meeting, they voted to require masks for everyone participating in indoor parts of their activities, of the students, and anything that's non-distant. The after-school program started on September seventh, for thirty-nine kids signed up, they, for the first time, are offering bus transportation home, so that would really help a lot of donors to be able to, you know, they're hiring a bus driver, the bus driver's also happy to have some work, so, so, so it's, it's a good thing. And, yeah, and it runs Tuesday, runs a Thursday, there are three clubs, sports cars and trucks, and life hacks for kids. It's intriguing title. And there's a new program called the High School Connections Student Enrichment Grants. They, it's going to be unveiled on their website later this month, you know, headwaters have been reviewing grants for teachers, for enrichment in their classrooms. Now, students can directly apply for a grant if they have the enrichment activity, like they'd like to participate in, like, maybe a summer program, an arts program, music lessons, anything that, that costs money, that they might not have readily available. So that is just a really great idea, and they can direct, they can apply directly, there'll be a link on the website, the new website is up and running, and, but link is not there yet for this particular program.
It is, it's on there now.
Okay, it wasn't there when we spoke, but it's there. Yeah, it was up to the minute.
I was gonna say, a lot has changed, we now have fifty-six kids enrolled in after-school.
And she said, there are fifty-six kids in after-school, wow, it's growing right back up to where it was back in the day, that's fantastic. The, the website is headwatersfda.org. And there also are two newly trained artish mentors, they're going to be not just their mentees. There's another new program called High School Plus, it's now available for students who would like to have assistance for, for the dual enrollment piece that we talked about. So when students take a class, a community college class, they need to pay to get credit, and students in need can apply for grants for those credits as well. And there is a new internship that headwaters is offering that I will, I'm going to try to paraphrase, I have so much information, but it's about, it's called the Rad Writing Internship, is, they're looking for a junior or senior who is interested in writing for the newspaper. They'll get a Skype in, so it'll be a ten-month period of time, and they will be expected to write two articles each month. That's a, that's a great opportunity for someone. And that's what I have from headwaters.
Yeah.
Okay.
Actually, I, I wasn't able to attend the meeting, I remember we went, but I understand it wasn't before.
Sure, there was, I just didn't bring my notes. But, yeah, thank you, it was a quick meeting, and then they postponed this one until next month because of an incident that happened, so it's been quite a while since that last meeting.
It was right after our last meeting, and so, pardon.
Are they working?
No, they're working.
One program came to each campus, they've been asked and in prison for the whole time. There's one case in Little Town, two, there was one case in the Warren Center, and that was that.
That's good. I did have another piece of information, the Lions Club is offering an apprenticeship program, where the Lions Club will pay for half of the salary of an apprentice if a plumber, electrician, carpenter, whoever wishes to have an apprentice, a high school student, our work release program, and the Lions Club will pay half for that person's salary. So if anybody is interested, they can contact me.
I'm taking notes, I got it.
What'd you say?
I said, I'm taking notes for our college, I think he's a pokey.
Alright.
Text him right now.
We'll, we'll, we will raise the money, we will pay half the salary. We've already had one student who worked at Mount Sinai Therapy Place last year, that worked out quite well.
Alright, thank you. We're gonna move on to public comment, if you'd like to address the board this evening, I ask you to rise and come to the podium, state your name and your district, and to, to try to keep your comments to three minutes, because if everybody takes a terminal seat within over an hour, so, if you'd like to address the board first.
I want to see some volleyball, that's why I have to go over. My name is Jimmy Sweller, Stonewall Hall 4 District, represented by Mr. Larry Grove. I, very quickly, hopefully less than a minute, first of all, just a, a throw out to Nurse Robbins, what a great presentation, thank you, and the only question I have is the use of the pause, does that mean that our school is now potty-craigned? Ah, you knew it was coming. Seriously, well, a little more seriously, I, I wanted to come tonight because I wanted to commend this board and the administration for making some tough decisions last month and leading up to last month under what I consider to be unfortunate and, and truly unnecessary pressure. I was, I, I had planned to come to the meeting in August, and I'm sorry, and I think any others too, we're sorry they did not. My heart goes out to you all, I can't imagine the tough situation that you all were in, and I know that in your hearts, you made what you felt was the best decision, and I commend you for that, and, and I also commend you for having the courage to realize that, okay, maybe that decision wasn't so great, once it got off the ground and started running, and, and you didn't hesitate, you didn't hesitate to authorize your chief executive to make the changes that you needed to make to keep our community and our kids safe. I, for one, couldn't ask for better leadership from our community, and I sincerely thank you. And the last thing I want to say is, I, I just hope that in moving forward, you know, we've heard talk about data and metrics and dashboards and so forth and so on, I just hope that you will strongly consider keeping the mask mandate in place for as long as it takes us to get a handle on this thing, and maybe even a little bit longer. Related to that unnecessary pressure, my phrase a minute ago, I was shocked when I was reading the paper, some of the, some of the many comments on social media that a lot of parents made about, you know, what their kids were going through with the mask. I gotta tell you, as many of you know, I was here last year, and, and we had a mask mandate in place all year long, and I had exactly two high school students that I had to speak to about the mask in the whole year, two. One, to be fair, made it three, because one of them, I remember I had a conference with him in the hallway, and they got it, the kids got it, and that's always the case, the kids get it. So please know, your kids get it, that they know that, that wearing this mask isn't so much about them as it is about everybody else, it's about all of us helping to protect everybody else, and I just, again, I urge you to please keep that in place, at least in the foreseeable future, for all of our benefits, and again, most importantly, I commend you for doing such a, I, I can't even imagine why you guys do this, I'm gonna have to talk to you every day, and thank you very much.
Good evening, Tom Brindley, Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen of the board, I do want to say how much I appreciate having just been through the process with the team, with the NCIS team.
You're welcome.
Oh, I'm very sorry, I'm Arthur Elkoff, I'm from Hampton, Michigan. And I, having just experienced it firsthand, I wanted to point out of, of one item, I think, which is important, and that is that, and I agree with Jake and we're all in this to, to try to protect each other, and we certainly want to keep a healthy and happy community, but at the same time, I think one little thing sometimes drops through the cracks, and that is the idea of due process for the individual. Sometimes the process, as it's applied, can result in an unjust or incorrect result, and of course, I'm always part of my order, because that's who I am, I'm a lawyer. So due process, except for means adequate notice to the individual and also the opportunity to be heard. I don't want to get into the weeds of my, my own personal experience here, which I will follow up with a confidential memorandum to this board along those lines, but what, what was most frustrating to me, and I guess because I am a lawyer, is that there was no avenue of appeal, where we had a disagreement about not only just the physical tests, but the symptoms, and all that went before, the days, the chances of exposure, and all those kinds of details, but when added up, I think in compelling case, that, in, in my case, that quarantine was not, not called. And the reason that's a big deal is there are collateral consequences to quarantine. My wife's a school teacher, God bless her, God bless all of you, what you do, school teachers are the best, but she had to take six and a half days of her own personal leave. It's, you know, it's, and, and I'm kind of lucky in my situation, because I'm, I'm rather flexible in my schedule, but at the same time, it does place a burden on parents, and it could be a financial burden for a lot of parents, having to lose work, especially in two-parenting, so we have to not be cavalier, and when there is an argument to be made that a child is not COVID positive, that person needs to be heard, I really applaud the detail of this claim that Dr. Brindley heard. needs to be heard, I really applaud the detail of this claim that Dr. Brinsley and her team has come up because I think it's fundamental irrational, you know, the limitation with the seating charts of who could be exposed, that drastically reduces the number of quarantine, which is very important. My son, special needs, he lives for school, he loves school, he absolutely loves this place. And when he can't come here, it is devastating to him. So for me, I'm extra sensitive to the fact that my kid is in school at all possible costs. And I wanna advocate for him, and I can understand when other parents might feel the same way. There might be some obvious cut, dry, easy, okay, my kid's got COVID, he's gotta stay home and I gotta suck it up, right? But not always. So here's what I have to suggest humbly, that you adopt as part of your return to school policy, that overarching policy, a system similar to that, that a child would be entitled to if he were being expelled or temporarily suspended or disconnected from. Okay? So here's what I propose, that, and I'm allowed here to do it, a neutral fact finder, who can hear and agree to parents' argument about whether or not, hey, does my kid really have COVID or does he have the symptoms? That slide, I believe it was number nine on the earlier presentation, this thing looks like seasonal allergies. I've got seasonal allergies, my kid's got seasonal allergies. It looks like the common cold. So you need to take sometimes what they call the gold standard test, which is the one that Dr. Brinsley pointed out quite rightly, is really hard to get right there. But based on other health considerations, including, because your policy now includes an alternate diagnosis by a physician, that is being adhered to. It wasn't in my case, but that is an important thing. If the doctor looks at it and says, now, and his dog brought back his, he should be back in school the very next day. And so if that is not afforded, then we need to have somebody outside the system, because you know, systems tend to kind of militate and protect themselves, if you can, if you can, and if that's, that happens in every kind of, I hate to use the word bureaucratic, but in another situation where sometimes the system, sort of like the movie space where that was, where the computer town takes over, you know, that is, and so we need an outside, we need an outside fact finder, right? In the event, in the event that a parent disagrees, I was kind of, did you hear, what were you saying? I'm sorry, I thought I heard somebody saying something. I'm not crazy, I'm going true. I just thought I heard something. That, that, in the event, and I submit probably the rare event, that a parent might want to be heard on that, somebody outside the system to do that. And I'm here to tell you that as a public health attorney in this county, I'd be happy to take on that responsibility as a neutral attached hearing officer, given the board was so inclined. So that's essentially what I want to leave you with. As I said, I will follow up with kind of the down-to-the-weeds analysis, which I hope will be helpful, and believe me, I come to you in a spirit, not a criticism, but, you know, I want to.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
This situation.
Yep, appreciate your feedback, it's very nice.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Very interesting, thank you. Who will be next? Yes, ma'am.
I'm Miss Minkul, and I'm from Hampton District. Miss Myers was my representative. And I don't usually attend school board meetings, if you guys haven't seen me here, because usually I, I think you guys have done an amazing job. And I'm backup teachers, I'm superintendent, so I am, I'm also on the PTO and vice president. But last month I moved in town. And you guys did something that never occurred to me that you would do, we opened the schools without the mask mandate, without the precautions that we had last year that were so successful. And that was really, it was, you know, it was a bottom went off. My daughter is in the sixth grade, I was personally affected because she needed to school for three days. Before I got a call from the lovely Rob Murray, who is fantastic, but my daughter was in the sixth grade class that had COVID-positive individual, and then the entire sixth grade was out, and she was out of school for three days. It just, we didn't have to start school that right. And I don't like to be a critic, but it really went down horribly. She didn't have her computer issue, yet some courses were not online, so we had a big pickup and tonight we talked about learning loss. This is gonna fall into that category for these students. And I think to even suggest, you're looking at matrix numbers for the county and to talk about easing the mask mandate at this point would be akin to the Virginia Department of Transification deciding that because last month we had fewer fatalities, that this month we should relax seatbelt laws. I think to even discuss at this point, as far as losing the mask mandate is extremely critical, we should keep the masks on, we need to keep the precautions up, we need to keep everyone healthy, and we need to keep everyone in school. So that's what I can say.
Thank you. Who will be next?
Hi, my name's Tiffany Matthews, I live in Wakefield District, so this is my representative. I think I sent a communication log.
You need a question?
Sorry.
You can go ahead and talk, hold that up.
Okay. So last week I created a petition as a communication tool for members of the community to express their support and following the guidance of our public health officials and to kind of keep our masks on in school, to be ones that we know that these are students safe, they have staff safe, and add to more in-person learning days. So right now, the petition's at two hundred signatures, more or less, some of them are a little won't count there. Yeah, I just, I created that so that people can probably, and either contact their health officials, take advice, their desire to follow guidance from D H and other public health officials.
Do you have the words of the petition, the, what was the petition? Hold that up. You need it? I'm sorry, I didn't, well, I had to stop sharing so I could get into my email to get that through.
So the petition says, the Rockland County School Board, we want our CPS students to be in school safe and focused with their practices and activities. The best way you can achieve this during the escalating COVID-19 pandemic is by faithfully following public health recommendations and mandates, including universal masking without a sentence. We have now lived through multiple school-based outbreaks while we, while very few are masked at school. We want to do all we can to curb the hardship in this school and serious illness or death from the pandemic in our community. Therefore, we request the current local COVID-19 policy discarded in favor of a simple statement that Rockland County schools will adhere to the mask mandate along with the full complement of mitigation strategies without exceptions until such time as the mandate is lifted. Let public health officials, not politicians, fire pandemic response mitigation strategies. We would like for the school, we would like a school schedule modified for outdoor safe mask breaks for each student each day, and hope that schools will create, creatively employ other methods so interactions can be both safe and distant and personal and friendly. So my personal reason for signing the petition was, I was signing for my daughters, their friends, classmates, and staff to be safe and healthy in school.
I noticed, I noticed, hey, that very first for this, that a great number of those people, they're not, they're not from Rockland County. They're all over the U.S. There's people that are citing the thing that are not. I mean, there's.
Do you actually have the full list?
Yeah, there's like fifty, right. What I'm saying is, they're not, there's, yeah, I just looked at it before I came to the meeting, the one that I was emailing, and I'm just saying, there's fifty or so that aren't even.
Not fifty, sir. Did you, like, pull up this front key that, do you want to look at what happened?
Oh, I got it. So I received, I received the email, I received an email at about five o'clock today, I scanned the list, and what I'm telling you is, I see people that are not Rockland County people. So all I'm saying is, if we're gonna consider the data, let's clean it up.
I'd like to, I'd like to do that, but I can't, sir.
Well, I'm gonna believe what I got from the email message.
Yeah. You're better with your emails.
There's no need to get this one.
From what I could see, I think the majority of it was from Rockland, because it's not even taken.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Who will be next?
Front drummers don't speak in crowds, I apologize for that. I'm in a unique position that I cover two counties. I get to see the good and the bad in both counties. In the past couple of weeks, I've seen a lot of good coming out of the school system in Rockland County. Your dashboard, you show the quarantine, took me a week in another county that I cover to find out how many students were quarantined in the school itself, not outside of people, but just in the school itself. The answer I got was, very low number. I covered the football team Friday night. Unlike you all, they had thirty-six players on the team. Twelve of them were quarantined. Twenty-five percent of the football team was quarantined. Six of them were starved. They had kids came up off the freshman team playing positions they'd never played in their life, just so they could have a body on the field. I appreciate the quarantine that you all have on your dashboard because it tells the community something that they need to know. About a month ago, when y'all started school, Shannon and I were talking on a daily basis, sometimes twice a day, early in the morning, late at night, trying to get a handle on it. We, as governments, are tired of the talks now, but we have to report what we have to report. I was talking to Shannon one day in her office, and I said, do you feel like a yo-yo? Up and down, VDA's, local health district, the governor, CDC, parents, staff? She said, no. She said she felt more like a bobblehead. So if you're gonna feel like a bobblehead, you can be a bobblehead.
And what is Shannon saying on the bottom of her head, cheerleader and chief? Okay. But if you're gonna be a bobblehead, you might as well be a cheerleader. Thanks for bringing celebrity. There you go. I guess the mask makes it easier to have a likeness of yourself.
My red hair, red hair. My daughter, my hair used to be red when we talked to her. Thanks.
Probably a market.
Remember that old swing you used to have in the mall with the rubber string?
Right, thanks. Who will be next?
This is good, it sounds really loud to me. My name's Kristen Greb, I'm in the Hampton District.
Kristen, I'm sorry, what's your last name?
Greb.
Correct.
Yes. So I just wanted to point out, what was put on the screen was actually the handwritten, hand-signature portion of the petition. And what was emailed was, one that went out via email, has to this point, two hundred and thirty signatures. I'm not sure how we're verifying which ones are Rockland County and which ones are not. I think we could probably maybe figure out that pretty quickly, and I think we still have a pretty high number of people in Rockland County who have signed the petition. The second thing that I would just want to think about as a community, I've heard it mentioned that this virus is behaving in a sort of mild manner with some of our children who are showing very few symptoms, and that's great for those children, but they, those children are coming out and interacting with their fellow community members who may have a more severe case should they, should they contract COVID. So that's all, and thank you for hearing me out, and thank you for all that you have done.
Thank you. Who will be next? Yes?
Hi, Ellie Clark, I'm from Good Myers District. And I wanted to say, I've heard something that upsets me quite a bit, and I know that my two siblings who had a lot of really good educational experiences in Rockland County compared with Fairfax County where we moved from. And I wanted to say that I think it's wonderful that we continue teaching values and morals and respect for each other and honesty and everybody going by the same rules. I understand that there was some bullying, mask bullying on school buses, and that would be telling somebody they're a wuss or whatever if they're wearing a mask on a school bus. And you have to wear masks on the school bus, that's the law, and that should be enforced all the time, and if it's not, something's wrong, something's not fair. But I really fully support mask-wearing. I'm an RN, I know that that's what we need to get through all of this experience with COVID. So I just wanted to please, you know, remember that my mask protects you and your mask protects me. Thank you. And let your children, let your children know that that's the deal, you know? It doesn't make sense to make fun of somebody who's wearing a mask when they're protecting you.
Thank you. Who will be next?
I just wanted to let you know how much I appreciate all the work you guys have been doing, and I want you to know that I'm very, quite supportive of the fact in the decisions that you've made previously at the different communities, I know that they have been hard, but I appreciate them, and I appreciate that we are working with data-driven decision-making. And because of that fact and the decisions that we've made previously, I believe my children in this school system, as opposed to waiting to find a different, alternate way of educating them. So I just wanted to know, I'm very happy with what you have done, and I understand that government has magic and we're supposed to that, and we work with the data-driven, and if you have to mask, you mask, but I want to make sure that we understand that should be temporary, depending on what's happening in our communities. And that masks shouldn't be something that the children have constant. It should, like we discussed previous occasions, children, COVID ones who don't know anything but masks at this point, who are scared when they see people's faces, that's not something that needs to continue on, needs to be able to stop when it's time to stop and let them have that break. Needs to be able to stop when it's time to stop, and let, have that break, and go back, and we have to go back. But I just want to tell you that I appreciate everything you've done, thank you.
Who will be next? Anyone? Yes?
Shawna Ballmer, Wakefield District. And I just want to say, this was really informative, and I really appreciate all the information and value you presented. We pulled our kids out of school this year. Um, one of them did that when, when calling the bongole from the first week. Um, uh, my husband left his job, don't school them, so it's been really challenging this at least. But this is really encouraging, and, um, we've been telling our kids, "Watch the numbers, watch the numbers," and they want to go back, make other favorite teachers this year, they're surprised in their classroom. We want them to go back. Um, so we're looking forward to that, and this is what's giving us, um, really positive encouragement that we can feel comfortable sending them back, knowing that, um, masks are, they, they work. This is why, this is science, right, it works. And so, um, we're really excited to see that, this one, I know this is, um, a county that has a lot of, uh, polarization and divisiveness at times, and, uh, it's nice that we can work together, and I know it's not always easy, and so, um, I think you put the decisions. And we are really looking forward to sending our boys back to school soon. Um, getting back to some, uh, LCR home too for that, so. Thank you.
Thank you.
If there's anyone on Zoom that wishes to address the board, you can raise your hand, and we'll unmute you so you can address the board. I have Ellen Adams.
Can I have a little area?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes. Okay, Ellen Adams, Wakefield District. Um, just very briefly, um, I'm following on the heels of Mr. Spindler and Ms. McCool. I also want to commend Dr. Mirzani and the team for the, um, hard work. It's, it's so impressive to sit here and see the, uh, the details and, uh, all of the protocols that have been analyzed and put into place. And I also want to really strongly urge you all to keep those protocols in place even beyond when it might seem like things have went up, because we know that this, uh, you know, this, the variant comes and goes, and, um, I know you're following, uh, the matrix, but I just, I urge us to keep the, uh, the things that have been working in place, and so that we don't have to act at all. Um, and just remember that this is a community issue, and, uh, this is not an individual rights issue. This is about community members taking care of each other, and I really commend you for your actions along those lines. Thank you.
Thank you. Some people are online, I can tell.
Um, I have ten participants online. If anyone else wants to address the board, you can raise your hand. Mr. Sharon, I see all their hands raised.
For the near term, we're going to continue to do the Zoom, uh, model at our meetings. If you can't get out to our meeting and you want to participate or listen in, you should. Uh, the, the announcement that we make about the meeting will have a link in it, and, uh, if you have the family, take your house, please, please, thank you.
I have, uh, two messages that wanted to relate to the board by constituents. First is, this one, my name is Shannon Evans, and I live in the Hampton District. My son is in kindergarten, and my daughter is in second grade. I ask that you keep the current mask protocol in place. Masks not only keep them safe, but help keep them in school. My son has only been in class thirteen of the twenty-four days this year on no fault of his own. There's no way a kindergartner will learn without consistency. My daughter, who already struggled in some subjects, was just quarantined along with her grandparents. She had complete assignments at home with no teacher instruction, as was his last year with virtual days. I am not a teacher, and I have no training for explaining the necessary curriculum for my children. My husband and I both must, must, must work and have, have alternative days off to be home. We also have had to pay a significant amount of money to have our children tested when they were, when required by the school because of a possible exposure or signs of a symptom. Rockhamann County currently has no testing sites, and urgent care in Warrington charges a hundred and fifty dollars for each weekly test. There is no vaccination available for my children, so I ask that you all try to keep them as safe as possible this year, and keep requiring masks to be worn in school. Thank you for all of the time you've put into serving as a school board member. It is very much appreciated. Sincerely, Shannon Evans. I have one more from a PR nurse. There are four to six hour minimum wait times at urgent care centers in Front Royal Winchester. I've seen seven to eight hours at times. All urgent care online reservations are mostly full by the time we open each day. There are twelve hour wait times in PR on average, and there are no ICU or critical care beds in our health system at this time.
All right, anyone else? Last chance, last call. Um, yes, the whole school team.
Yes.
It's hard work.
Slash chef slash farmer.
It's hard work.
Farmer, yeah.
Chef.
Brian, Brian. Uh, my name's Brian Ballmer, uh, my better half's already commented, Wakefield District. Uh, I am the resident of Rockhamann County.
Real close.
Uh, rep, resident of Rockhamann County, uh, you got to come here, so you got to from here, uh, since county, and, uh, our family wants to be a stay here. And, um, we had serious reservations, uh, when the school year started and everything that happened. Uh, having seen this, and what Ms. Murray, her thirteen has done, uh, is pretty commendable, uh, minimum to state at least. Uh, I just wanted to reiterate what other people have said before. Oh, my name is on that signal, uh, petition as well, Ms. Mills. Um, in case you wanted to check that out as well. Um, but the, uh, other, uh, people have made comments before about continuing the mask mandate. I see no reason to lift it, it works, let's keep it going. And, um, as far as, you know, people, I, I don't have a youngster who I can't really explain the masks to, so I can't really relate to that. Um, but I know with great challenges comes, uh, character building. And a lot of time, people can reminisce about some challenges that they faced in their life that they can smile upon now and, uh, see as a, uh, a way they gain strength. Um, and that's, that's really, I want to say, and, um, I'm not a voice speaker. Um, I'm pretty good at, um, exponents right now. If anybody wants to know, so, and I mean, with the, uh, boogie apparatus does, I will be able to explain that. And that's character that I have built upon in this challenge. Thank you very much.
Thank you. You know, and, and, uh, contributing to this frustration, the, there, so when an edict comes to K to twelve school, uh, and it's not living on the rest of the community, for example, the workplace, back when we went through COVID the first time, uh, the workplace was given, uh, flexibility to the employee, that allowed families to try to work through this whole thing together, right? And it's, it's stretched our families and stressed our families, because when you have to quarantine a child and, and you can't get away from work because they're inflexible, because they, they don't give you the room to do that anymore. It's creating a stress on this, this, our community, right? And so I've, I've experienced it because my daughter's experiencing it, and, uh, and so I think, uh, it's good for us all to remember, everybody's stressed out, every, and, uh, I think it's because the whole thing's been handled a little differently than the first time we went through COVID when, uh, there was ultimate flexibility to manage, um, manage our homes. So that's unfortunate, but that's where we're at. Uh, anyone else? All right. Uh, we are Rockhamann. We will proceed, thank you for your comments. Moving on to action items, is there a motion to approve the August BSBA policy update? So, we have a motion, Mr. Grozer, second.
Second.
Second from the bottom. Is there any discussion? All favor, I.
I agree.
Turning new business.
I just update on, um, the, so we took over the meeting with a friend, so the Rockhamann County Elementary School over there today. And, um, so we had a real good makeover of the ground for our elementary school, including new, new plants, as well as, um, creating outdoor classrooms based on some of the PTO, making tables, PTO ladies, like, there would just be sort of an outdoor classroom head around some of the, create space for more outdoor learning. So I'm hoping that some of those concerns that, um, Dr. Gainer was speaking about in terms of, having more spaces to be outside at both schools can be addressed, and there's a lot of people that can be ready to give free advice and free landscape banking things. So I think we can work creatively within the constraints that we have in this pandemic, and still have a good, a good time in the next month.
All right, uh, the next regularly scheduled board meeting is October the twelfth at six thirty in this room. And at this time, we're going to be moving into closed session, uh, strictly a question.
I do. I move the board to meet in closed session for the following purpose, to discuss and consider the appointment of staff for masthead positions, coaching positions, and resignation of professional positions pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2 that's three, seven, one, one, A, one. And I, I, the special of people personnel, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, oh, two, pursuant to Virginia Code 2.2, that's three, seven, one, one, A, two.
You have a question, then, your second. One second from the bottom, all the paper, I.
I.
All the help. So we're, we're going to be a closed session for approximately twenty, twenty minutes, and we'll be back in this room to, to certify and close, if you care to hang on.
And it goes on Zoom, I'm going to end the Zoom fee very close session, and when I come back, I will start leading again should you prepare the, um, your boards to certify after that. Otherwise, the, the regular time is completed at this time.